To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call attendance, Marty, please.
Mary Jo Rosman-OSky.
Here.
Mary Jo Radcliffe.
Here.
Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laurel Lee.
Amy Huffman.
Here.
Naomi McThumberclower.
Scott Harden.
Here.
Has the meeting been notified to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now at the point of public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board for comment? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move 7.1 Focus on Purpose after 6.1 tonight.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed. Okay, motion carried. We'll move on to board commendation and we have Black River Falls EMS.
If you guys would mind coming forward, we have Jody Soher and Steve Collins at the board we'd like to recognize and give you your certificates and then tell everybody why we would love to celebrate you. Here you go. Thank you so much. We have to turn this face if you can all see. So the partnership that we have with the EMS benefits almost every level of our district, from the early kindergarten students getting to climb all over the ambulance and get to see the fire trucks, all of that stuff, and our second graders walk down for field trips and you guys are always so accommodating for everybody. On top of that, the state changed a lot a year or so ago to require all of our head coaches to be trained in full ACPR and first aid and our one school nurse can't possibly get that many coaches and so Steve has been a phenomenal partner in that training and we recognize that that takes away from his other responsibilities as well and so truly from kindergarten all the way through seniors in high school, all of our students and staff benefit from your expertise and your sharing with the community, so thank you so very, very much for what you do for us. This is the thunder.
We're gonna do, do you want to do picture out here? Picture out here.
Do you want to get set up on the table? Right in front of my stuff there, okay? Thank you. You bet. Just scooch in. Perfect. Thank you so very much. You're certainly welcome to stay. We also recognize that you're a senior, you're welcome to go as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
You bet. Need us to suggest something or not? That's fine. Okay. Thank you. So for our Focus on Purpose tonight, we have Black River Falls Middle School and I'm sure these two ladies will introduce themselves in very fine style, so whenever you have any. Thank you.
What is one of the second leading causes of death behind heart disease, Mia?
That would be cancer and in 2015, there were 8.8 million deaths and 1.69 million being from lung cancer. Hi, my name is Mia and I am the president of our FCC LA chapter.
Hi, I am Kaylee and I am the vice president. As you can tell, cancer is a big concern in our world and it is close to many people's hearts.
These are just two of the reasons why we wanted this to be our project this year. Our goal was to give the patients receiving treatment a sense of mental strength and security during this hard battle in their lives. We decided that a tide fleece blanket would make a great item to give them.
We call our project Wrapping You in Strength because we feel that the patients should have a sense of strength when they wrap up in their tied blanket. On November 17th, we pitched our idea of holding a school fundraiser to our principal, Mr. David Rowe.
Our principal was very supportive of our idea and helped us set up two weeks to hold our fundraiser. Setting up two weeks in a row was not as easy as we thought. We had to work around our student council cookie drive and winter break. During one of the weeks, we were in competition with the cookie drive, but our fundraiser was still very successful.
We then called Gunderson Lutheran Health System and they directed us to the oncology department. After trying to contact someone about our donation and failing, we finally got a contact person.
Her name is Stephanie Har from the American Cancer Society and she is the patient navigator. She is very sweet and helped us all throughout our project. She was also very excited for us to donate these blankets.
We met with the seventh graders the Thursday before our fundraiser and the sixth and eighth graders the Friday before. We met with them to explain how our fundraiser would work. Our fundraiser took place December 11th through the 22nd. The way it worked was the students could donate as much as they wanted and the winning homeroom of each grade would receive a cookie and ice cream party. We did this to keep the students interested and to spark a sense of competition for people who do not normally donate, but we still encouraged them to donate out of the kindness of their hearts.
We kept the interest of the students by holding a trivia question on Monday and Wednesday of the two weeks. We researched facts about cancer and used this information for the trivia questions. The winner would have $5 donated by us into their homerooms total. To ensure fairness, we sat at a table during each grade's lunch to make sure that there was no cheating on the trivia. The trivia fact that shocked students the most was that every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer. You can see the rest of our trivia facts listed here.
On the last day of our fundraiser, we had the opportunity for people to participate in a hat day. They would pay a dollar to wear a hat for the day and it would be put into their homerooms total. We chose to do this on the last day so it would be a fun way for the final donations to be brought in.
It all just happened to work out that we would be having an all-school assembly at the end of the day on the 22nd. We counted all the money and came up with a final total and the winning homerooms of each grade. This was announced at the all-school assembly. Our total from the school with a few kind donations from teachers was $685.72.
We were absolutely blown away by this total because our goal was about $400 because if everyone in our school donated a dollar, it would be a little bit under that goal and we explained that to the students when we met with them. Overall, our fundraiser went very well and we were amazed by what our school could come together and accomplish.
Our next step was to contact local businesses to see if they would like to donate. We did this with a letter explaining our project and who they could contact with a donation. We delivered these letters in person so that they could put a face with the project. We delivered these while we were fundraising at school.
You can see the businesses who have donated on this sheet. We just delivered more letters after thinking of more businesses who could be potential donors and after the word of our project was spread through the community.
As of right now, we have $400 from the businesses, $100 from DNS Manufacturing, Community Dental, and Jordan Chiropractic, and $50 from Co-op Credit Union and Hoffman Construction. We raised this money after buying our first batch of fleece for our blankets and we have delivered thank you letters as well.
We bought our first batch of fleece on December 27th over winter break. We took a trip to Joanne Fabrics in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. We bought 55 pieces of fleece, thinking that we bought 60. Once we paired all the fabric up, we realized that we didn't purchase five pieces, so we problem-solved and made 27 blankets with one piece left over. We also had three blankets donated by family members.
Kaylee's stepdad is a general manager at the Skyline Golf Course and he donated the use of the Lunda porch for us to make blankets the 29th of December with our chapter and a few family volunteers. We expected more chapter members to show up, but only three did. This, we think, is because it was winter break and one of our seventh grade chapter members was having a birthday party.
We got all the blankets made that day, even with only a few members. Our local newspaper, The Banner Journal, also came and interviewed us and our article was published the following Wednesday. This helped us spread our project outside of the school into the community. We also reached out to people by making posts on social media of our journey and we received many comments about what a wonderful job we are doing and how many lives we are touching. Our school superintendent, Dr. Shelley Severson, included us in an announcement on the radio about the Black River Falls School District making an impact in the community.
One of the biggest parts of our project that impacted us was when we delivered the blankets. We called Stephanie again to confirm that our blanket delivery date, January 10th, was still a go. We wrapped up the blankets and tied a tag on them explaining the purpose and who the donation was coming from.
Once the delivery date to Gunderson Lutheran was here, we put 15 blankets in the chemotherapy infusion center and 15 in the radiation oncology department.
But this is not the end of us making our donations to Gunderson Lutheran. We also received a thank you from Stephanie after our first delivery date was finished.
Right now, I'd just like to take the time to read the thank you note. This is from Stephanie Har, the patient navigator that we've been in contact with. "Hi Kaylee, thank you so much for your donation of blankets to the cancer center at Gunderson Health. They went really fast. Many patients use them during their treatments because they are being infused with room-temperature drugs and are often very cold. The best story of the impact you made on the patient came the day after you donated them. We have a patient who is homeless. Obviously, at this time of year, it is cold outside. The radiation oncology staff gave him two of your blankets and he was moved to tears knowing they came from students at BRF and because of the significant impact it was about to have on his life. Thank you again for your donation. You both made a huge impact on these patients." So as you can see in our budget, we have $502.51 left in the FCC LA account. We have set a deadline of February 16th for the remaining donations to be received.
After we have finished collecting donations, we will go back to Joanne Fabrics and purchase the rest of the fleece. Our plan is to round up to the nearest blanket and we will donate the extra money needed.
We will then have another blanket-making day, but this time, we plan to involve our churches. We are doing this because we would like to involve people in our community who wouldn't normally be invited to participate.
We plan to do this at one of our churches and in order to notify the congregation, we will have an announcement and also print it in the bulletin as a reminder. As of right now, we are shooting for a day in late February or March, or early March, to make them and then make another trip back to Gunderson, but this time, we would like to leave a few with our local oncologist who has a couple patients in town.
We connected our topic back to FCS with three national standards. Number 7.3, demonstrate professional behaviors, skills, and knowledge in providing family and human services. Number 12.2, analyze conditions that influence human growth and development. And 13.5, demonstrate teamwork and leadership skills in the family, workplace, and community.
The FCC LA purpose of our project was to strengthen the function of family as a basic unit of society because we are strengthening the patients and their families by connecting them and hopefully making this battle a little easier.
Reflecting back on the day that we delivered the blankets, it was one of the most humbling days of my life and it showed me what an amazing thing we can accomplish when we put our minds to something.
It truly warms my heart knowing what an impact we can make on a stranger's life and I'm very thankful that we could add some strength to this hard battle.
So that was our project when we presented at the regional competition in February. So we have made it to state, so we will be competing at state in early April, so three weeks from today. So we have continued our project and we received two more donations from businesses, $50 from Ace Hardware and $20 from Almuth Harley-Davidson. We have also gone and purchased our second round of fleece and we were blown away by how many we actually could buy and right now, we are looking at about 48 blankets to being delivered again to Gunderson. We have three options with our blankets this time around. We can take them back to Gunderson again. We could branch out to Mayo and deliver there and like we said in our speech, we would like to leave a few with Dr. Ettle, our local oncologist here in Black River. So we hope that we can accomplish all three of those options since we have so many blankets.
Very good.
I would also like to recognize Carol Norman, who does a fantastic job at the middle school guiding the FCC LA students. It's an awful lot of, you ladies were fantastic, but I also know that doesn't happen by accident here. And some support is very much appreciated. Twenty-one, seventy questions for the ladies or for Mrs. Norman?
No, but I'm just so impressed with your poise and your delivery in your project. What a wonderful job.
Thank you.
No wonder you got the rating you got. Thank you so much, it's great.
I love that you even included in your speech that you sent thank yous to those businesses because sometimes that's that afterthought, after you have this great idea. It's easy to forget that when you've moved on, so good for you for remembering that important step and that will matter to them should somebody come asking in the future, so good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are certainly welcome to go as well. Thank you very, very much. You bet. Thanks, ladies.
Well, that gets our meeting off to a good start.
Thanks, Mrs. Norman. Thank you.
What? And now we'll discuss the prices at the Skyline Golf Course. Okay. We'll move on to the 6.2 Financial Institution at the high school.
I did not have any board members forward any questions to me for additional information after our discussions last month and so we would be looking for you to take action on that one.
Has there any discussion on renewing the Tiger Credit Union?
I was kind of uncomfortable when that came about several years ago because it appears that it's a monopoly of students and a monopoly of attention given to one of our institutions in town and it always makes me uncomfortable when it's a public institution. And so I was intrigued by Bob Becker's suggestion on this going forward for a couple of reasons. For one thing, it allows all of the financial institutions to participate and to present different kinds of informations to our students. And there are different kinds of financial institutions. Banks are different than credit unions, so I think it would be valuable for our students to have experience other than co-op credit union. I guess that's all I have to say.
Sure. I would just offer that we certainly do engage with some of the other institutions. For example, I know second grade walks to the Jackson County Bank and does a field trip down there. When the high school does their reality day, there's other lending institutions in the community who are invited, so his proposal wasn't really that drastically different than what we currently do. They just don't have that presence right in the building, but we certainly rely on the Gomia Junior Achievement, someone from Black River Country Bank came into the schools to do that, so we're not that far away from what he was suggesting with or without the credit union.
And we also do the bank shot at the basketball games with just one financial institution. You know, I thought he had some interesting comments too, but I feel that no one else proposed bringing themselves in as a credit union or as an institution in the school, so my feeling is that I would like to back having the co-op credit union do that again. That's my feeling. It has been successful and I guess what I was impressed with at both our meeting and at the credit union meeting was that zero accounts are opened through the Tiger Credit Union. They are truly, seem to be focused on financial literacy and experience and guidance and I think that was a concern with Mr. Becker at that point, but it's very clear that they don't open accounts through our credit union.
The thing that I felt was important that the credit union does is they are giving kids sort of employment opportunities and training and, you know, we were always trying to find ways to connect our students to businesses in the area to have those kinds of opportunities and they get to stay right at school and do this. I think if some of the other financial institutions in the area aren't present maybe during the appropriate classes to give information or share information, that maybe there's ways that we could, you know, find to integrate invitation during the appropriate times.
It just seemed to me that the proposal that Mr. Becker gave was more of a constructed proposal than anything we currently have. It was much more intentional.
How different is something like what he proposed different than what is being taught in some of the classes? That would be my question.
The curriculum that he recommended is really a canned curriculum and our financial literacy is currently taught in one of three ways. It's a graduation requirement, but a student can take one of three classes to reach that graduation requirement and so I am not familiar with the curriculum he suggested and we certainly could do some digging. I don't know if it would be a replacement of one of them that currently exists or, you know, picking pieces of it. What currently happens is those three teachers, like one is business law, one is called personal finance, and can you guys help me out with the third?
Consumer math.
Consumer math, thank you. And so those three that teach that financial literacy graduation requirement have different institutions come in as guest speakers. So he's proposing buying a curriculum. I'm not sure we need a curriculum. What we would love and appreciate is the access to them as experts when we come up with those kinds of topics and stuff, so I absolutely understand your concern and we can talk to the staff, particularly the one who does the personal finance, she's the one that does the reality day, and we can be very intentional in making sure an invitation goes out to all of the institutions, say, "We wanted your reality day, we need 30 people, each institution can send us six," as opposed to that appearing like it's all from one institution. But as far as the curriculum that he suggested, I'm not sure that we're in need of a...
I don't think that we necessarily need to buy another curriculum if that was the intent. I guess I think that two days a week of co-op credit union is way different than a day or two of another institution being involved or a day or two of an intern. You know, it seemed to me that there would be a broader experience in other financial institutions with what he proposed than what we currently have.
I think too, though, he very clearly stated that they did not have any interest in having an institution within the school, but to sort of piggyback on the education. And we didn't hear anything from other...
Jackson County Bank was not interested either.
Okay. One of the things that stands out to me too, this isn't money-making for co-op credit union, this is truly a donation of their time and their resources to our school. That's the way they're choosing. Again, they don't open accounts and they don't make money. They employ our students, they train and are very dedicated to the financial literacy. So I'm very comfortable with renewing our successful partnership that we have with them.
I agree with you, Peggy, that we need to offer the other institutions every opportunity to come in and work with our students.
Yeah, and students need to know about the different options and if we're doing that, I'm quite comfortable with our financial literacy.
They have a captive audience and free advertising through the school this way.
And the bank shot for the Jackson County Bank is free advertising.
No, that's not free. They pay for...
Well...
And that's what I'm saying about co-op. They're putting their resources in to the district.
Exactly, but they have a captive audience and...
Neither one are free for the businesses. I would also just offer, and I'm not lapping one or the other, but I would also offer that our FFA has a very close partnership with the Jackson Electric Co-op and we can certainly discuss whether that is a cornering of the market or a monopoly or not, but they certainly model the tenants of a cooperative in the community and our FFA is heavily involved with that work as well, so.
Scott, we didn't hear from you. Do you have an opinion on this?
Yeah, I think community co-op is doing exactly what the co-op does, it reaches out and builds partnerships with the community and I think, I think them being involved in the school for financial literacy, it's a good thing to have. After listening to Mr. Becker speak, I just thought it was one of those things where they just didn't want to participate and I was, well, it's kind of their choice, but I kind of like it the way it is and I had no objection just to staying with the community and co-op.
I guess my comment would be if the other institutions don't want to participate at all or they maybe want a more limited participation, you know, maybe if that's in the classroom a couple different times a year or whatever, however much it may be, that shouldn't necessarily mean that the credit union can't participate those two days a week that they want to simply because other places don't want that big of a role.
I think there was more to it than that, though. I think that there were some concerns about even the policies of having a financial institution inside a school. I think there was, I don't remember exactly what he said about that. I know there's nothing wrong with that, but he did say something about that concept.
And as Mary Ann shared, there's like 98 high schools in the state of Wisconsin that currently have an active credit union in them and so it certainly, I don't want to leave anybody thinking that it's against the law or shady in any way, shape, or form.
Oh, no, I didn't mean that. I think it was, he had some concerns about the principals.
It was principals, for sure. Yeah.
Is there any more discussion? Is there, we need a motion then to go ahead with continuing on with co-op credit union? Is there a motion for that?
I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Second? Second. Any more discussion or comments? All in favor, say yes. Yes, opposed, say no.
No, for yes.
Opposed, you can say no. Okay, okay. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to strategic plan review.
All right. As we checked last week, our family feedback surveys are hot off the presses. So these slides are going to, or just to remind you, as a measure of our strategic plan, the community engagement pillar, we rely heavily on our feedback from all of our family stakeholders. We sent out the surveys and gave people about two weeks and then we nudged them and gave them another week after that and we had some pretty good participation across the board and so I will share with you and I just want to tell you what happens with this data from here. Tomorrow, we actually kick off the first of them. It's a continuous improvement planning committee meeting. Tomorrow is Red Creek, so their building leadership team along with Laura and Rick will be here for the day. We kind of hold them captive and they start their morning by digging through the staff feedback data, the family feedback data, their achievement data, look at their goals from last year and where they landed, and then they start talking about what plans they would like to make for the coming year and what did their data tell them might be an area that they should focus some improvement efforts. And that's actually the question that we just flat-out asked parents, is what do you appreciate about the school district of Black River Falls? And the next one is, in what areas do you think we should focus our improvement efforts? And so we get some great feedback. So... All right, sorry. So the first question we asked about families, "I know how to get school information when I need it." And so this rainbow that you see in front of you goes across from the age level, so forestry, Red Creek, middle school, high school, and then district average. So those colors will be the same as we go through and it always goes from our youngest students to our oldest students and that is the percentage of parents that either agreed or strongly agreed is what you are looking at. It really seems like I'm going up, not down. The arrows are counter to it. Okay, sorry. "I receive information that helps me understand my child's progress and I just wanted to point out here, you can see a significant shift in the, or a significant difference in the forestry data. That was one of their building goals this past year was helping families to understand that information as they go throughout the year and so that will be exciting for that to have to take a look at that response from the focusing of their goals this year." And again, we focus on the strongly agree and agree. You can clearly see that the disagree and strongly disagree, the strongly disagree is very, very, very seldom used, which is a positive thing across the board, so. "Concerns I raise about my child are addressed promptly." Again, I always point out that this says that the concerns are addressed. It doesn't necessarily mean that they love the resolution, but that somebody got back to them and to be honest, when we talk about customer service and people being engaged with our organization, I think that's a bare minimum expectation that when they have a concern, they feel listened to and that someone will talk to them, so.
There was no...
There was an act. They were one way or the other. "I feel welcome at my child's school. This is something that we certainly talk an awful lot about. If we want to engage families, they first have to feel comfortable stepping foot inside the door and so I know the front offices spend a lot of time on that. When we talk building security, that was always a challenge before when there was no human being anywhere near the front door. Now that there is eye contact in just about all the buildings from that door, that really makes a positive difference." "Staff have high expectations for students in their classes across subjects." Oops, I'm sorry about that. What would that one have been? I'll think of it when we go on. "I would recommend this school to others. This is our community engagement pillar recommendation, that measure that we continue to mark. We are up above 90% as a district average that agree or strongly agree that they would recommend this school district of Black River Falls to others, so that is outstanding and definitely one of our metrics that we continue to push on." So this is the comparing of years, so 2016, 17, and 18, oldest to newest going across. This would be the district averages, so lumped all of the individual buildings together. When we looked at the scorecards, which we will get in the fall once... When we looked at the scorecards, which we will get in the fall once we have all that information for them, this is the district scorecard data, and then each of the buildings gets their individual stuff which was represented before. "I receive information that helps me understand my child's progress." I think it's interesting, though, just steady the same. Concerns I raise. We always ask in February, I think I've talked about that before, the first year we had them ready for the first time in February, and every year we've said, "Why do we do it in February? Everyone's gloomy and grumpy and ready for this snow to melt." But because we started in February, we continue in February. There you go, that was the family feedback. And so there is narrative feedback as well, Becca was with it. The buildings will read through all of those individual comments, and that is some of the stuff that they like to spend the most time. Because we asked that question also, is there anyone within our organization that deserves special recognition, and if so, why? And they just really enjoy getting to look at the who gets nominated or recognized by families, as well as the why. Those pieces of information from the staff survey and from the family survey are what we use for some of our Tiger Roars. If you follow on Facebook, Julie Teadens does a Tiger Roar every Tuesday, and some of that information is received from this feedback survey. So we try to make sure that when we ask people for this information, we use it and not just let it sit someplace. So after all of the rest of the data is done from the year, we will update all those scorecards, and then those will be shared again once each of the individual building scorecards are done. Any questions about that?
I have a question. So if people are not agreed, agreeable, do they put comments in your place?
So the only open-ended comment section is, "In what area should we continue to focus our improvement efforts?" It's really the only comment area. And I will tell you, I just read through every one of them today, the most frequently named thing is bullying, and parents' perception of student behaviors is probably the most frequently cited area of concern. There are some, depending on the level, that talk about, the vast majority is about student behaviors. There are some about grading, that they feel like they're trying to hold their child accountable, but they're struggling with this guy with Canvas, and so they feel like that doesn't go as well. And then there's very, there's a lot of like one or two comments, things like, "I don't care for the breakfast, I don't care for, my child's on the bus too early." One that I read about five times was, "Please make the school closing decisions earlier." So there's, you know, kind of all over the place. But the areas for, you can almost inversely, what do they appreciate? So there's a lot of people that say, "Communication, communication, we appreciate that the district pushes out communication in so many ways." But then you can also read the, "What area should we focus our improvement? Communication, communication, I feel like I don't know what's going on." And so it really is, but that really is the reality of any group of parents. There are some that want to know so much more than others, and so those that have an interest, they feel like it's never enough communication. And for parents who, you know, maybe aren't as engaged in the day-to-day workings at school, they're thrilled with the amount of communication that we do. And so it's the challenge of trying to find a happy medium that's going to address the needs of all those families. And at the very end, if they don't feel like we're pushing enough out, that they feel welcome to come and ask for it is also good, so.
One thing I'd like to comment on is, when I'm out in the public, sometimes I just hear people talking and they don't know who I am. And I was in a medical clinic the other day, and two high school parents were, or one child was going to be starting high school next year, and they were just chatting about that, and they were, remember what it was like when we were in school and they wrote the assignments on the board, you had to remember, you know, everything? And they were so positive about Canvas. They said, "You won't believe, when your kid gets there, it's going to be so easy to know, and they can just check on it." And it was just, they just kept going on and on about positive things in the high school. And it sounded like the parents themselves hadn't had a very good, successful time in school. So I just felt good to hear, sometimes you hear negative things, but it's nice when they don't know who you are and it's just conversation happening and, yeah.
The overwhelming positive comment is about our staff, over and over and over. What do you appreciate most about our staff? The kind, or about our district, the kind and caring staff, the fact that the staff invests and makes it feel like a family, that the staff knows almost every kid in the building, that the staff are always open to talking to me. It is overwhelmingly, the most positive, is our staff. And this year, unique, I saw it like on four or five different surveys, or maybe it was the same parent that filled out a survey at each level, but they said, "I love it that my kids are having some of the same teachers that I have. It makes me feel like I'm coming home." So that was really nice, and comments like that, that they just really appreciated. And then one of them said, "I'm not calling anybody old, but it's nice to see teachers out there when I graduate as well." That was, that was nice. And when we were sharing the data with the staff, we always point out, we let them read through the comments, but overwhelmingly, the most positive part of the district is the relationships that they build with the staff, which, to be honest, that's what it's all about.
Well, thank you for gathering that feedback and using it the way we do. I think it's a very good positive thing. Our next report will be student success.
So we spent some time talking about the history and social studies curriculum and the resources that we currently are using, and Stephanie had a whole selection out there for us to take a look at. Also, in general, just kind of looked at how the district revises or reviews curriculums sort of based on the DPI standards as they are changing. And then to like look at professional development planning for next year, and also with the standards face-by-face rollout of new curriculum or new resources.
Resources, there you go.
Right.
The only other thing to add, I just informed the committee that we are looking at some possible new resources for middle school math, and for some possible supplementary resources for middle school grammar. So we're still in the processes of doing that, but just keeping an aggressive approach.
Anything else to be added? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Under finance and facilities, you received monthly expenditure report in your packet. Are there any questions or anything you want to discuss from that? Anything brought out? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, say yes. Yes, opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Policy committee report will be a little bit longer. We'll go through our first readings of the policies.
All right, so we've got a slew of them for you. But there's not a lot of substantive changes in them. There's a couple at the end that might call for a little bit more discussion. Truly, the school board, the field trips and community services was just updated. It had some different grade levels spelled out, which was irrelevant, and so I'm just simplified by taking those out. So any concerns with that? All right. Then the rule that goes along with it, also updated some of those. We very seldom get the two months proposed, or two months of approval. You don't need to open the rule, it's okay. Yep. So it was just a reminder updating to the rule. When we get to the volunteer policy, can you keep opening it up there? Should we? That one's in my place. I wonder if Marty wants to keep going through there? Yeah. Ah, shoot. The rule, you can open up that one. That, right there. So I looked at our volunteer policy. Our volunteer policy was written when we had a 50% staff member in the district that was our community education coordinator, Monica Lopenstein, way back when we first got her 21st Century Grant. She was part-time that and part-time community education person. And so she very aggressively managed volunteers within our organization. That has, of course, been long, long removed. And so now volunteers are vetted through Marty here at the district office. And so what it boils down to is, we used to have two categories for volunteers, and it was either supervised or unsupervised. And we had a long list, I think that is in the rule there, of examples of what would fall under each category. I went to the WASB Policy Resource Guide and found that they group it a little bit differently. They certainly still talk about the need for supervision or non-supervision. What happens with our current staff members? When we hire somebody, we do a local criminal background check, but we also have recently started working with a national background check company. And for a very small fee, our previous policy said every three years, a new background check would be run on everyone, and Marty would keep a third of the staff, and then a third of the staff, and a third of the staff, and keep doing it. Through our enrollment with this national company, they now notify us once somebody, anybody who's in our organization, they notify us anytime something changes. So we made some changes to our policy and rules so that when somebody is going to volunteer in any kind of an unsupervised activity, we would also ask them to fill out that national background search so that they became a part of that ongoing database that continued to renew. And so you see that rule has been heavily updated there. The one-page document is a change in, the one that you opened first. There we go. This is a change to the document that we used to use for people to fill out. The other one had far less information on it, and Marty would sometimes have to do some callbacks. It had like your current address, but if they've been here for less than, you know, a short time, she was having to hunt them down and ask for follow-up, follow-up, follow-up. So it seemed much easier to just update our document and get all that information upfront and then make it easier on this end. And so if we are not doing the national background check, if they are only going to be in supervised activities, then this is it. And if they are going to do the national, if they're going to do it unsupervised, then there's that other national background check form that would need to go along with it. Included in your packet was also the volunteer handbook. I had asked Marty, once all the policies and exhibits and rules had been updated, if she could take a stab at that handbook to update it to all of our new practices. Because again, the handbook was created when we were much more aggressively managing the volunteers and working with them, and that just is not the case anymore. And so we want to make sure that we are welcoming, that we're not putting any barriers in the way for people to come in and volunteer, but also make sure that we're clear in our expectations. One of our challenges is that there is no black or white. If you find this on a background check, they absolutely may not volunteer. That is all a decision-making. And so Marty always shares what she finds, and we have a conversation about the nexus between what is on that background check and what they are asking to do, and how long ago the problem was, and all of those things. So I would say the most frequent time for volunteer applications is when a field trip is coming up at the elementary level or even at the high school level. So field trips are probably our most frequent volunteers. Any questions about any of that? All right. 363.3. So we are updating this policy. It used to just specify students with special needs, which implied only special education students, but we certainly use assistive technology with some students who don't also have an IEP. And so the language has been updated to take away any of that previous language and make sure that students with a 504 plan, we're not discriminating against any of those groups in providing some assistive technology. I'll give you one of our more frequent examples. We have copies of a lot of our textbooks in audio version, and there are some kids that just really struggle with the decoding all the time, and so they can't ever get to the meaning of the text at the upper levels because they're so busy with the decoding. And so that would be a very simple example of assistive technology being used. Questions or concerns with that? Okay. Next one. Extracurricular programming. Again, this was one that I was going through the 300s, and our policy hadn't been updated since 1989. And so I checked with WASB Policy Resource Guide again, and they were a little bit more holistic in their coverage of the different topics that they included in extracurricular activities in organizations, so.
So that's where all the language comes from is WASB?
Most of it, yep. There are some times that I ask for some samples from other districts. There are some things that we have policy on that WASB does not, and so then I decide if it's serving a purpose or not, and whether we should continue with it or if it can be deleted because it seems irrelevant. In that last batch, there was a lot of them that just kind of aged out, school-aged parents, and some of those that we just didn't need anymore, so. Questions about that? The next one was student publications. Again, I did not see any need for this policy. It talks about a lot of our written student publications, we've got online ones, we've got all kinds, and to be honest, there are classes that the kids take, and so the rules about them are written into the syllabus of those classes. So there really is no need to have a separate policy which talks about those student publications. So I recommend deleting that. And the rule that goes along with it. Student fundraising activities. This again was updated with a combination of WASB language and maintaining some of the language that we had previously. The challenge with our student fundraising is, and we've had some conversation about this, I'm not sure with the full board, that we have so many youth organizations who are extremely helpful in fundraising and supporting our high school athletics and other activities, but then because they are an independent youth organization, they don't ask us for approval for their fundraisers. And so it is very possible that at one time, our high school basketball team could be doing, I'm just going to make this up, selling woven baskets. And perhaps the youth organization for wrestling decided they want to sell woven baskets, and because we're not a controller of that, or, you know, we don't filter that information, it has led to a little bit of overlap at times. So I asked Mr. Ruffel, because he is not involved with all those youth organizations, but certainly in contact with all of them, if he knows about them, if he could just let me know that they're going on so that I can share them. Lisa signs the student activity fundraisers that are just in our high school, for example, NHS wants to have a big sale, you know, stuff like that. Lisa signs those, but it's those youth organizations that are cropping up fundraisers. And one of the board members, I asked when we were at an athletic event this winter, it looks like a school fundraiser, it acts like a school fundraiser, but it's not a school fundraiser because it's that youth group. And so it's a good problem to have because they are fundraising for our activities, but we, they're not under our control, so. Anyway, long story, off of school policy changes. But this does spell out that children under the age of eight are not supposed to be the door-to-door at 16 years of age. So it does spell out some of those guidelines so that the board is clear, if there is ever a school fundraiser, that those are the expectations, we won't send kids with a wagon selling their wares.
So how, what if they just go anyway?
If it's a school district-sponsored one, we would then say, "You're not following board policy, this is not acceptable," and we would have to stop it once we were aware of it. This is the year of the PTO, that's the first time the elementary's done a fundraiser in a long time, a really long time. Then the next form is just the, so you can see the form that goes along with it, so. We don't...
351-1?
351-1, yep. There was just a small addition to also highlight per-board policy that we offer credit recovery in the summer. And it looks off balance when you look at our summer offerings, it has athletic programming and a bunch of stuff, and one line for academic programming, but truly, it's just saying that there is academic programming, that there's a lot more stuff that happens. But honestly, the, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, how our summer programming is scheduled each year. Mr. Nordman is the summer school coordinator, and he throws an email out to everybody who's interested in teaching one of the summer academies, and then whoever is interested, they get together and they talk about possible themes and possible topics, and it kind of is born from the group that is interested in teaching it. We know that literacy and math are always very, very strong components. Whatever the rest of the theme is, kind of works around those core areas. And so as far as middle school, that's been, individual groups or clubs have kind of cropped up over the last couple of years that have offered some things at the middle school. And it's all good because there are more experiences for our kids. But the high school, the vast majority of it is credit recovery, except for those kids that do summer band lessons, or FFA has an awful lot of leadership and training stuff during the summer, but the rest of it is primarily credit recovery. All right, and so this is the one that came from the Student Success Committee, that they made a recommendation to the policy committee. And this is the one that my understanding, at the end of last board meeting, when Patty said she wanted an update on implementation, my understanding was that it was about this policy. So the Student Success Committee more diligently meets on a monthly basis and did this way last fall. The policy committee... The policy committee was canceled in January because of the weather, and so they just looked at it for the first time in March. And so that's why it is just coming to the board now, after the policy committee gave it its blessing last fall. So I had asked Stephanie if we could, two birds, one stone, if she could walk us through the changes in this policy and also update you on the implementation of the policy up to this point. So if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So as the Student Success Committee already talked about when we looked at this, but just to fill everyone in, we wanted to update the policy to reflect more current practice. And so the flavor of this policy has a much larger focus on student learning and resources that would support student learning. And you'll see throughout the policy that there's things around assessment and instructional practice and some of those kinds of things that weren't present in the current policy as it existed. And we weren't looking for this policy to enact a bunch of changes. It was more to bring it back to, bring it into line with practice, or what best practice would be, and what our desired practice would be, and what our practice usually is, I guess I should say, as well. And so a lot of the language changes were reflective of that. There's also an additional part that wasn't in current policy that talks specifically about when students, when teachers are selecting classroom materials for their particular students or as part of a team, perhaps it's not something that's a district large adoption, but we do know that teachers use supplementary materials on a regular basis. And so I wanted to put specifics in there of things that they should consider, and the fact that they should consult their principal, a larger team, myself. And so you can also see that reflected in the policy as well. And then the accompanying rule has some pretty specific guidelines. And so I wanted to just make sure that that was listed in there because that certainly has been part of past board conversation around wanting to make sure that there's some kind of oversight, even in classroom materials, but not wanting to have teachers feel like they can't ever do anything on their own. Typically, teachers will come to myself or one of the building principals if they're looking at possibly a supplementary website or additional resource that they'd like to bring into the classroom, if they would like to purchase it, and so they would like one of our monies. But even if they're not, they're very good about asking. But that is our kind of expectation, that there's some level of oversight, and yet also wanting to put that there. So that was kind of probably the biggest add to that policy. A lot of the language remained around being consistent with community values and looking at resources that were going to be supportive of the standards or aligned with standards and the rigor of grade levels, those kinds of things. We might change a little bit of the wording, but that expectation is definitely still within the policy as well. There's an accompanying rule for this that has specific guidelines, and then we also added an exhibit to this policy for the technology request, just because that's a formal process that we now have in place, that if people are going to have something that's instructional technology, that that would be part. So we added that as well. Not that that needs action, but just that it's part of it as well. And then the second, well, before I go into the second policy, any questions or comments about that? As far as process goes, once this officially passes the board, I've already shared it with the principals, but we'll talk a little bit more about it just so that they're very clear on their role within that policy. And then we'll also take it to our PLC leaders, just because there's a lot of discussion that happens at the different grade levels or content level PLCs around instructional materials, whether it's the large-level district adopted ones or classroom policies. And so wanting them to be very well-versed in the expectations so that they can carry that back to their teams and have some conversation about what that looks like. And if that's not something people are very familiar with, then everyone will be on the same page moving forward. Any questions around that? The second policy is around library media center materials. And again, this was just really bringing it into line with what our current practice is, not nearly as many changes in this policy. We did change a few of the wording pieces. We wanted to add some pieces around purpose and some other things. We also added a section on reading of materials and what are processes there because that was not very well spelled out before. And then if there is any concern with materials, that is also highlighted at the end, that was in place before as well, what a person could do should they have any concern. But those were the changes for that policy. And then accompanying guidelines were pretty specific as well. We really wordsmithed the heck out of these today.
That's why the bulk have no questions. Because they're wordsmithing.
It had been a while since it had been revised, so it was good to check.
And the rule is all brand-new, right? Because there was no changes tracked. So that was all brand-new.
So I have a, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So I have a question on implementation. If we're trying to achieve balance and perspectives in the broad, and it says that that must be done, how are we knowing that that's happening? And I'm particularly interested in that with, like in the US in politics where there's no textbooks, where you can go and look and see. So how do we know what's being used and that it is balanced?
I guess for that example, we do have a curriculum map that does articulate what the curriculum is in that class.
And the resources would be listed there?
Yeah. And so that's something that we update on a pretty regular basis as well. And so the curriculum documents themselves, and so it should be current. And if it's not, that's certainly ongoing work.
So there would be websites listed in it?
I was just going to say, so what would it say under resources? If not a textbook, what would they be able to see?
Correct. Or if it was some kind of audiovisual resources.
And they would be listed on the curriculum map?
There's a column that has resources. And so, yeah, we can look at that together if you'd like to for that particular class.
I was just wondering how we are assured that the policy's being followed.
And I think from, in the broader sense, whether it's with text resources or without, I guess that would be me, that it would be followed just from the regular curriculum work that we do together. Certainly, I can't be everywhere, see everything, but that is something that, like you said, it is in this policy, and so it is something that we have to uphold. The other reason to share it with PLC leaders is they're the ones to carry that message and make sure that continues to happen in that ongoing curriculum work. And so it's that, it's everyone's message then to carry as leaders in that curriculum work. And so it would follow, not follow, but it would go to them as well to make sure, ensure that that's happening.
I like the comment that you can tell by the money, right? You can follow the money when they want to buy something, so you know what they're purchasing.
Absolutely.
I guess that I'm still not quite getting what I'm wondering. Okay. So if I'm teaching current events, and there's not a textbook for that, so do I submit to the curriculum committee my resources that I intend to use? Or how do I, how do I list my resources?
Current events, I guess, are you thinking, like, what news station one would pull current events from?
Right. If I'm giving students a syllabus, for instance, if you go to college and you get a syllabus, and I don't think, I don't know how that works in high school.
They have syllabus.
Right. So there are websites, and there are articles, and there are things that that particular course is going to use as references and resources. Is that listed someplace so somebody looks at it? Is it submitted? Or is it just something that the individual teacher decides and then gets to the students?
So what are current practices is that should be documented on the curriculum map.
Okay.
And then typically, in high school classes, that is also listed on the syllabi.
Syllabi.
Syllabus. It's just one. But if it is not, then it should be listed on that curriculum map, because that's kind of what guides our work as this is what our course is. Resources, textbooks that we purchase from a company, we don't do everything from cover to cover within that. Our curriculum that we have written ourselves is more our guidepost. And so because of that, it should list our other resources as well. But I would say that a lot of high school syllabi that I've looked at have resources listed also. Current events is a little bit of a trickier one, just because I think there are some suggested places that teachers will send students to, but if a student brings in a current event from a different place, a teacher, we don't have necessarily a policy to say, you can't share that one. But we do talk a lot about, is it a credible site to have brought it from? And that leads to some really great discussion within the classroom because as consumers of information, there's a whole lot of stuff out there that we want them to be able to look critically. And as we looked at the social studies standards at our last meeting, that's a big piece of the new social studies standards, is that full ability to inquire and critically analyze. And so.
I would just throw a little bit to your point. Having kids gone through several social studies classes at the high school for current events, they've been assigned, here is something that happened, you find two opposing resources on this topic. And so if you were to look at their curriculum map, I don't think you would find those resources because the kids were tasked to go find them themselves. And so I just don't want you to feel like every website that a student uses is going to be listed somewhere, because sometimes they are set to task to go and collect resources and bring the discussion. And quite honestly, most of their work is not in understanding that, well, let me back up. The assignments that I'm thinking of is, so this happened, find two opposing viewpoints of this, and then talk about the differences, similarities and differences, and what could that mean, blah, blah, blah. So it's more of a dissecting of the information as opposed to this one is right and this one is wrong. So it's more of a comparison, contrast, and viewing through different lenses. So I just don't, you're definitely not going to get a list of every resource that's used in those classes. Because current events, it changes. I mean, every day, a new magazine starts, or a new something, you know, new website, or a new something. So, and I would just add, and Stephanie alluded to it, but the other part is, we've had dialogue with all of our professionals about the importance of balanced resources. I mean, you were all a part of those discussions over the last two years even. And so at some point, we trust and respect them as the professionals in the classroom and know that they understand the importance of those balanced resources and.
I was just more looking for information. If I had a question, where I would go? And just saying curriculum maps is where we would go.
Definitely. The other place, a lot of high school teachers have a lot of resources in their campus courses that Mary Jo was talking about earlier, and so that would also be a good place to go. Depends on the course, how drawn out, you know, how much information is there, but there's, in a lot of, especially the social studies classes, a lot of those teachers have a wealth of their class content right there for you to be able to take a look at. So that would also be a good place to go. And that would be something that parents would have access to, but that's something we could absolutely give board members access to if that's something you're interested in doing. If that would be helpful for you, please let me know. If you'd like access in what courses you'd like access to.
Any questions for Stephanie or Shelley? Okay. Thank you. My next policy was student census. And there's really no need for this. There's reports that need to be filed with DPI that talk about all of our countings and so forth, and so this is really irrelevant, so I recommend removal. The next one for 12.1 is full-time students. As the, perhaps you recall, last year, yeah, so with the budget, there were lots of conversations about the part-time open enrollment, the full-time student, all of that stuff. I updated the full-time student one. I haven't gotten to the part-time open enrollment, all of those yet. Those will be coming for the next time to make sure that we're in alignment. And perhaps you remember the cycle that we had a part-time open enrollment policy, and then they went to course options and youth options. So we deleted our part-time open enrollment policy, and now we move back to needing a part-time. So a good thing it's not really deleted forever. We can just go find it and revamp it. But this is the language that was recommended by WASB. Any questions about any policies that you would like to see different, or because our goal would be that next time, and I wanted to ask your opinion on this. When I give them to you with all the changes tracked, sometimes you find typos and you find other things in there. Would it be okay for the first reading, if I give you the tracked changes, and then for second reading, can it be the clean version of the policy? And that way you can review it, and if you had any concerns or, because I feel bad sometimes you get hung up on some deletions that we would fix when we went in to accept those changes. So first viewing will be like this with the colors, and then for the second reading, it'll just be the new document?
And all of these that have been brought forward were reviewed by policy committee and forwarded to the board. So next meeting, we will have our second reading and approve these or make changes as necessary.
I did have one question, and I'm not sure if it was part of the policy, the curriculum policy that we just looked at, but I remember going through the process that if someone had an objection.
Yep.
And I'd like us to review that, or at least policy committee to look at that.
We just did in the fall. We did, we did it here. It is referenced on the bottom of the curriculum policy. We just kind of get.
Let me just look at that for one moment. It just seems so circuitous and so difficult, and I was hoping that we had simplified it a little bit.
I'm guessing it's 871, because it's referenced right on the selection of instructional materials. It says School Board Policy 361.1, and then see also School Board Policy 871. And so that is likely when somebody has a concern or complaint about instructional resources.
And we just looked at that last fall.
We did. Yep. And in fact, Stephanie just utilized the policy with family in the community, so. It's not impossible to do because she currently has worked through it with somebody.
I had somebody call me, it was before Christmas, in regards to a particular book that was being read in the high school. And so I just said, here's the policy and the rule. I said, here's how you handle any difficulties you have with that material.
We can certainly bring it back for, just a quick review again, but I, that was a question earlier this year.
Okay. We can do that as long as that goes along with that, too. That would be a good idea. Any other questions about the policies brought forward for first reading? Okay, we'll look at them again next month. The next item is the meeting minutes need to be approved.
Motion to take the meeting minutes.
Thank you.
One second.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'll move on to Dr. Sieverson's report.
Okay. The first one is, I know that Red Creek has talked before about their J. Propper Heart. Have you guys heard the grand total that they raised this year? It is amazing, and almost getting to the almost disturbing point, how much they raised during this. Twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And so I got a letter from the American Red Cross that clearly we are one of their favorite gems for the incredible efforts that that building does.
Heart Association.
Pardon me?
Is it Heart Association?
I'm sorry, American Heart Association, I'm sorry. J. Propper, yes. And Hoops for Heart, and Shape America, and, yes, American Heart Association. So Andy and, Andy Oscar and Mary Ann Anderson do an outstanding job with that, and it really has become all hands on deck. Every kid participates, as opposed to the days where it was on Saturday morning and only those kids whose parents would drive them in got to participate. So very fun event. I would tell you that the District Spring Banquet is April 25th. That's a Wednesday. It will be out at Castle Hill if you are interested. I wanted to also share that during the initial agenda, you saw some budget recommendations that were on there. Typically, by March, we are ready to make our recommendations to the board to balance, well, to balance, to propose to you a balanced budget for the coming school year. Because we are still in the middle of our insurance proposals, we are not ready to do that. And the why is because the health insurance is probably our second-largest expense in the district, and so it really has a significant impact on the rest of the budgetary picture. So the admin team is poised and ready. After this Thursday, the insurance committee meets again, is going to have some additional presentations, and we'll get some new information. And then the admin team will meet shortly after that, which leads me to, we need to have a special board meeting because we also never ask you to take any action on budget proposals before you've had the chance to marinate on them a while. We usually propose them to you, give you any background information, give you some time to ask additional questions, give us time to go out and talk to the buildings, and then we ask for action after that. And so if we could, before everybody leaves, Mary Jo threw out the dates, April 11th or 12th, if those could work, but we would really like to get that special meeting scheduled. Otherwise, we're going to be.
Too late.
It's really going to ramp it up if we make it to our April board meeting without you having seen those first, so. I also wanted to highlight the business luncheon. You heard about it a couple of times before it happened. There were over 40 businesses represented up here, and it was a full house in here. It was the date that our juniors took the ACT test, and so there was a lot of high school staff members who were available in the afternoon because the testing was done. And so a lot of our high school teachers helped to facilitate those conversations, and just some really, really, really good conversation. Jill and Stephanie did an exceptional job planning the day. They had, it was interesting because sometimes when businesses come, they're like, what are they asking for? They did, they created like an asset sheet. Here's some assets that the district has that might be helpful to you as a business. And then we also asked them to do the same thing. What kind of assets do they have, not necessarily financial, that could somehow help the district? And when I was collecting the sheets, I said, we were hoping there was a bunch of you with some CDL licenses, we could get some bus drivers, but no, we didn't find that. But we talked about, we have facilities that they could use for different events. We have quite a fleet of vehicles if they need for different events. And, you know, we just talked about some of the assets that we have as a district that we could offer in that partnership. And so when we look at the community engagement pillar, the group that had been working through that pillar talked about mutually beneficial partnerships, as opposed to us always being on the receiving end of those partnerships. And so it was good. Just one little side from that action, many people left here with, now we got the ball[1783.32] rolling, what are we going to do with it? And so there is one business, actually Hoffman Construction, got really excited about getting kids, making kids aware of the diversity of job opportunities in their field, that it's not just, you know, big equipment operators, but that there's any number of them. And so Hoffman actually put together a display for the middle school that was going to be in the hallways during the lunch hour, just as a way to, hey, stop and have a conversation with me about the work that Hoffman Construction does, and then they were hoping to bring that to the high school as well. And so the workforce was an overwhelming theme, so, so many of the businesses, that they, they all want a piece of our kids, because they need workers. And I will tell you that we shared with them how many classes our kids can graduate with credits already under their belt through our articulated agreements with WTC. We talked about the industry credentials that kids are training with. We talked about, you know, that we can expand our course offerings because of the online classes, and boy, they were so impressed, and they had no idea that our district our size was doing all that, and so they were really, really, really pleased with that. And there was one that said, did you invite the neighboring districts? Because, boy, we'd love them to hear all this. And Jill and I were like, no, we didn't invite them to our work. Not that we're, you know, being competitive, but they're welcome to organize a day's event as well. So anyway, it was, it was a really, really, really positive day, and again, I can't say enough about the planning that Jill and Steph put into it, so it was really, really well-attended. Then my last point, before I turn it over to others who have things to share, Paul Ricken was, again, accepted into the Elder Learman, that library that he works with out in Washington DC, and here's his topic for the summer, he is so excited. It's Eisenhower and the Art of Presidential Leadership. He gets to immerse himself for a whole week in that, and he is giddy, and I just love him, he is so, so passionate about continuing his learning. I mean, seriously, this is so motivational for him, and he's really, really excited. I have another son at home who's a social studies major, and he's like, oh my gosh, I'd love to go with him. Mr. Ricken's worked a few years to get to this point where he's accepted into these fellowships, and so very exciting stuff for him, proud of him for when he brings back to our district. So Jill had some things that she wanted to share, since we are not doing the budget recommendations, there's been a flurry of possible legislation that she is going to just give you the brief update on.
Yep, give a quick rundown on some of the things that were already approved, some of the things that we know. The low revenue ceiling is something we've been talking about. That increasing from ninety-one hundred dollars to ninety-four hundred dollars, and then it's a hundred dollars each year thereafter until it hits the ninety-eight hundred dollars. I was at a conference last week, an accounting conference, I'm sure you're all jealous to go to that, but we talked about some of this kind of stuff that DPI is there, and a lot of their answers were, we're still developing more information on that. We'll get that out to you in our summary, and blah, blah, blah. This was one where they talked about there could be some limitations on eligibility, so if we were to hold a referendum. They were talking about it before, like if you held one in the past, and it failed, and all of that, then you might not be eligible for this low revenue ceiling increase kind of thing. That could still happen in the future, that there could be an issue, but we'll just see what they say in the end, so I'm not going to speculate what that might say. But that is something that we need to keep our eye on. It does help us slightly in 1819, not really, because of the way the formula works. In the future, it'll be more impactful for us, so.
So we do have to have a referendum in order to increase that?
No.
Okay, good.
No, no. If we were to go to an operating revenue limit override referendum, that's the conflict, that there could be some limitations on that. There's a new categorical aid, and a categorical aid is outside the revenue limit. It's for personal electronic computing device. It can be used for devices, software, curricular materials, training for staff. It does require a local matching fund for it as well. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars for ninth grade pupil, and I'm smiling a little bit, because the DPI doesn't really know how many ninth graders we have necessarily, and it's not a way that we report things to them. We report K-12, and more lump sum kind of numbers. So he was, Bob Soldner is the head of the finance division, and he's a little entertaining when he presents some of this stuff, and when they don't have all the answers yet, so. So that's about just over sixteen thousand dollars, and again, that's outside the revenue limits, just a aid that would come to the district to be used on those things. There's also a mental health categorical aid, to expand existing mental health services that is mostly for social worker increases or costs. That was one where they really need to flush out all of it. Then there's also a mental health collaboration grant, and that is something we have to apply for. An example that they use, those funds can be used for, is a mental health clinic rating in schools. They collaborate with your clinics in town, you could use it for screening, and stuff like that. Then there were some other proposals that came out just in the last week or so. A biggie was the physical safety and environment. We used to have this exemption in the law, in the revenue limit, a couple year, a couple, a few years ago, 2009, 11, and then it was repealed right away in 2011 with Act 32. But what it was, is that you could adjust your revenue limit by a hundred dollars, times the number of pupils enrolled in the district, or forty thousand dollars. For us, that would have been a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, because it was the greater amount. The board simply would have had to adopt a resolution to increase the revenue limit. We'd have to submit a plan to the DPI, we'd work with local law enforcement agencies about that as well. But you could use those funds to purchase school safety equipment, fund the compensation costs of security officers in schools, or fund other expenditures consistent with our school safety plan. So that is one proposal that's out there. Then there's some that piggyback on the mental health grants as well, and aids, they want to expand them a little bit more to include school counselors, psychologists, and nurses, not just the school social workers, and of course, increase the amounts that they'd like to put towards that. They also like to increase the amount of the health grant, mental health grant that I had mentioned, and then some other training with community partners at trauma-sensitive schools was one of those things that we had been involved in before. There's also talk about a climate and culture grant, and again, this is about school climate and culture and violence in schools, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that they're talking about, but it'd be a grant that would fund prevention activities, things like violence prevention curricula, suicide risk screening intervention and prevention efforts, school threat or risk assessments, where they come in and actually do a threat assessment in your school district, and more trainings with local community or law enforcement partners, those kinds of things. They do talk about, require regular safety and security plan reviews. They had required a school safety plan a few years ago. We do have one in place here in the district, and would just require us to talk about it more often. We do have a school safety committee, and we do meet at least once, if not twice, per year as a district-wide group. All the individual buildings have safety committees as well, so. Those were just some of the things that are marinating out there, some are actually in place, and some are new proposals, so.
So all these things that you talked about, possible funding for, they aren't going to come out of that for original pot of money, this is extra?
Correct. And if you've heard, there's federal legislation and state legislation both being proposed along with school safety, and so in talking, I shared a little bit last month, that I had met with Sheriff Aldera about some countywide stuff. Today, I met with Chief Bachan from the Black River Falls Police, and everyone's just kind of waiting to see what it's going to look like. Everyone is pretty sure that there will be some new funding sources, but not really sure what it would look like, and how we can best maximize that, but I always, I think that we're pretty lucky to have both agencies so interested in working with us. All right, we'll toss it on back to the principals.
High school. Yeah. Okay. We are going to jump, starting with the high school. All right. Well, good evening. I brought with me Michelle Wood. She is our building aide at the high school, and runs our Tigers After-School Study Program, or we sometimes refer to as TASS. We sort of made the joke that TASS will help you get your tassel. But the after-school tutoring program actually grew out of our building leadership team. We were looking at students who were not performing as well in their academic classes, and we were wondering, what are some ways that we can continue to engage them, and also give them the support that they need, specifically maybe some one-to-one help, as well as some small group help. So we formed an ad hoc committee at the high school, and they met three times, and then that three times, they created this after-school tutoring program. And really, how we were able to do this is in lieu of spring parent-teacher conferences, which really, for the past several years, the spring parent-teacher conferences has always had a lower turnout than the fall, quite considerably, actually. So what we did is, we took that time with the teachers, and we now are doling it out after school for an hour every Monday through Thursday, every single week. So we have a set number of teachers that are there providing this one-to-one tutoring. And again, we also, the ad hoc committee, really wanted to focus on the student, on the student's engagement. Obviously, in high school too, it is an interesting shift sometime in the responsibility, with that being more on the student. Of course, we want parents still involved and so forth, but really trying to get those students engaged in their own work as well. So with that, we created the after-school tutoring program, and then Michelle Wood here puts it all together and runs it, so she's going to talk a little bit as to how she does that.
So this started basically in January, that's kind of when I started, so half of it was put together for me, and then I got to kind of fill in and change a few things as we went. So what I do is, I review our F-list that comes out every two weeks, that is to see where people's grades are, basically, so advisors can help them try to increase their grades. So we take out the freshmen and sophomores if they are failing two or more required classes, so that we can help them be successful, then we would like them to attend four of our tutoring sessions in a two-week period, so there should be a total of eight. It doesn't always happen that there's eight, but we like there to be eight. And I communicate with the advisors about who needs to come, how many they have to complete, and they do all the communication with their advisees and the parents. Occasionally, I have to make those phone calls, but a lot of time, I'm trying to put it on the advisor, so it's one person making those phone calls. I then log in every time they come in. We were having the teachers do the login of what they were working on, and who was working with the students, but now we put it back on the students, where they can grade themselves more about if they are successful there, if they completed what they wanted to, what they're working on. So we created the program actually in Canvas, what they use for all their other educational homework, and they get that at 4:10, and they get to complete that each night, and that's kind of a way for them to be able to complete their assignment, that they're there. And I also have to keep track of absences, and if we, because we've had some days where we haven't had school, or cancellations, and then we allow them to remake that day up the next two weeks. So I'll give you kind of an example next, today would be our day, today's Monday, right? Yeah. Sorry, it's been a long day already. Where we would pull our lists. So I get that tomorrow, I go through it, I send it out to advisors, so we have Wednesday through Friday to communicate with the students and their parents, so that they can work on rides or transportation, and then they start the following Monday of that week for, to complete their hours, their four hours.
So, yeah, overall, I am, the feedback has been positive with parents. Obviously, there's, our advisors reach out to parents, or tend to reach out to parents just about every two weeks, at least once, and I think this has also encouraged a little bit more of that communication, especially if they've been scheduled into the tutoring programs. And also, it's open to all students too, for anybody who wants to come after school and receive some extra help. I know you log that as well, for anybody who's interested. So it's a great resource for an hour after school.
If it bothered you, remember when we were looking at the high school scorecard, we said the parent-teacher conference participation was so low at the high school, and so we had talked about, what else could we do with that time, and how else could we measure their level of engagement? And so this was a creative idea for the high school teachers to float by and see how it goes. Have you seen a reduction in the number of kids on your list?
It varies. Sometimes they'll come off for two weeks, and then they'll come back on, which is really good, but some of them actually still come even when they are off the list, which I think is really awesome, because they find it helpful. I mean, like she says, we get a ton of good feedback, even students said, I really think this helps, so I'm going to keep coming. You know, sports just started up again, so it's a...
Motivator.
Yeah, it is a motivator, it is. It's, they know where they have to get their grades up, so.
How many kids do you have coming each night?
I would say it averages between seventeen and twenty-five kids each night, and we have about four-plus teachers there, advisors there.
Yes. Set back up. Great. Anything, any other questions? Great. Thanks for coming, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next. Did you have something you want to share?
Yeah. Well, I do have something for the middle school, although, of course, with Mia and Kaylee's awesome presentation tonight, it's hard to follow that up with what they had done, but Pam Holcomb, our building aide, collaborated with Brian Stember, technology education teacher, Carol Morden, to write this up, the following, which has to do with the job shadow that they run. And Carol worked very hard, spent a lot of time planning, Carol and Brian and Steph Briggan, to get this coordinated, and this occurred on Wednesday, February 7th. The eighth-grade students of Black River Falls Middle School ventured out onto their annual job shadow. Each student was matched up according to career interest with a business or occupation in our community that they were interested in, and they did this for close to two hours, each student did, on the day they went out on the job shadow on February 7th. Investigating a career on the workplace is a very authentic way of experiencing an occupation firsthand. Students asked questions about careers ranging from how much does one make, to how much schooling is needed to enter into that particular occupation, how much training is needed. It's a great way to learn more about a career that a student may want to pursue in the future, and we would very much like to thank our local businesses for partnering with us regarding the job shadow. It was a huge endeavor on their parts and on the schools, and there's no way we'd be able to pull off something like this without their support. Close to forty businesses, close to forty businesses partnered with middle school to help make the Job Shadow Day a success, so congratulations to the students, staff, staff, Brian, and Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 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 You know, our newer teachers, the coach needs to step in a little bit more and scaffold that help away towards the end. Some of our more veteran teachers, it's more joint from the beginning, and so that scaffolding happens much quicker. Yeah, another thing, advantage, is the teachers can observe that best practice in action. We can read about things, we can watch videos on things, but to see it live in action with their kids too is one of the biggest advantages. And also then, our coaches get to know our students better too, and those needy students that we have, you'll see later how they come together with some of our data meetings and they have the names on the tip of their tongues and know what those students need as well.
Okay, just as a reminder, last month, we talked a lot about the achievement gap reduction and how that all come into play for the elementary schools. As a reminder, the literacy coach is one of the qualifying factors for that grant, so I kind of wanted to highlight it for you guys to understand the, I guess, the magnitude of the role that they play in both the buildings. So having said that, some things they do to help improve instruction. They're big on professional development, obviously, so we got our, you know, our PLC meetings that go on every Friday, and we've got monthly meetings and so forth, but they'll come to a PLC meeting and they'll give 10- to 15-minute in-service on some professional development topic around teaching literacy. A lot of times, it can be based on need by the group. You know, they come to the meetings on a regular basis, they hear the staff out, they kind of interpret what they're looking for, and they try to provide that professional development they need for a whole group. But also, that's just on the whole group front, but they look more individualized, a lot of individual data for students and in classrooms. You know, I don't want to call them the data police, but they're keeping a real close eye on how kids are performing in each individual classroom, so they look at the running records, test scores, stuff like that, or, you know, our star literacy scores, star scores over at Red Creek and so forth. And then if there's something that's lackluster, you know, they take it upon themselves or they work with me or they work with the other principals to go into the classrooms and sit down and make a plan and try to work with that data and come up some good ideas to help turn that around. I just want to give a quick example. Couple of years back, we had a classroom that wasn't quite as good as we wanted it to be, and we had some model coaching come in from some other teachers within the building, and we had the coach pushed into the classroom, and within no time, things were turned in the corner like that. So it makes a big difference. It's important, it's important work that's done and it's very, very helpful. And a meeting I was at not too long ago, kudos to Mrs. Eberhard, but one of the kindergarten teachers spoke out loud, she says, "After having Mrs. Eberhard come in and push into my classroom, I was so excited, I couldn't think it was going to be that beneficial. In the end, it was a wonderful experience, I just wanted to share it with all my colleagues." She told that to all the other colleagues and it was just a rewarding thing to see something like that take place, because it's not easy to have somebody come into your classroom and tell you how to instruct when you're a trained professional. So I just, it's tough work to do, but it's good stuff. So they look a lot at the data, the PLC-type stuff with the tier-three interventions, that's where we try to get kids to individualize help, you know, with our RTI program. So they play a major role in that, on what kids need what for interventions, depending on their individualized data and so forth. So that's a big, a lot of stuff in a nutshell there.
At Red Creek, they also use the data reviews as part of their push-in process to kind of determine who needs their help the most, based on kids. And it was one of really cool experiment that happened the second semester at our fifth-grade level, is they just saw this gigantic blue group. And for the blue group, they are just on the cusp of being at grade level. And, you know, so often, we talk about our tier-threes and our tier-twos, and we're working really hard with our lower kids, but sometimes, though, that blue group, they just need a couple things to push them through. So they took the science and social studies blocks and they're keeping the kids, instead of rotating them through. So they have a few kids, blue kids from every classroom that join them, and it's a reading-based science and social studies class at that fifth-grade level. So Vicky Kramer is co-teaching with one of our fifth-grade teacher, that group of kids. And it's really exciting to watch that happen. So we'll see if they can get them all green. So also, they serve as a resource for our PLC teams, as well as individual teachers go to Vicky all the time. And they feel very comfortable with her too, and I think that's a huge piece of that role, is that you have to be accepting and willing to seek that person out. And Vicky's always working so hard to meet all their needs. They also participate in the data reviews and like, as Chad said, to really help place those tier-three kids. That gives her insight to look at our lowest of the low, what are they missing? And so then she goes back and supports the teacher at the classroom level of instruction as well, based on some of the things she's watching come through with those intervention kids too.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of professional development that takes place. So we're going to have the PLC meetings that happen weekly, there's going to be monthly meetings, there'll be some of the quarterly stuff coming up next year with the four-day PD stuff. We're hoping to get, grab, capture some time from our literacy coaches to provide more literacy training on quarterly basis, especially after they've had a chance to do some mini stuff, you know, in the PLC meetings and so forth, to kind of tie everything together for our staff. So we see some real benefits coming forward with that. You know, they meet with Steph and I and the literacy coaching meets building, they meet with the building principal, and we kind of collaborate together, I would say, more than anything about what literacy coaching or what needs to happen in the building for literacy coaching. So I think we synergize each other's efforts a little bit there. It's not just one of us thinking, this needs to be done. We kind of work together pretty close on that, on where our priorities are, on how to move things forward. So that happens monthly, and that's very beneficial as well. And we're constantly, or I should say, they're training me a lot too on literacy stuff, so I'm up to speed with what I need to know for literacy stuff as well.
And that helps us when we go in to observe classrooms too, so we know exactly what we should be seeing when, so...
The new staff, you know, it's an ongoing thing, we have every year, the professional development that takes place right there, 40 to 60 hours every two years is what they're taking up for time. A lot of planning going into that. You know, the things that they cover, they cover stuff on your reader's workshop, guided reading, writer's workshop, your word studies, all kinds of stuff like that with interactive writing, I guess. You know, there's a whole litany of different topics they cover, you know, they're teaching them best practices on how to implement that in their classroom. It's ongoing, you know, there's a lot of professional development, like I said, upfront, but then there's constantly, there's the stuff to bring back and renew and remind and reteach stuff, so that it's very fluid for teachers that went through the process. It's overwhelming at first, I can tell you that. I've sat in on some of the trainings and you'll see some people sitting there holding their heads and then, but in the end, I'm not kidding, in the end, they appreciate it because they, it truly does make them better instructors. And I've heard it time and time again, the dividends pay off for the hard work. So it's well worth the time and I couldn't say enough from the feedback that we've gotten from it. So it's good stuff. And their professional training is ongoing, as well, they get, they've been going out to, our coaches go out to Leslie University, have gotten training from them in the past few years. Coming forward, just a little notation on there, we're not 100% sure that that's going to be able to take place because of our, some of our Title I budget and stuff we're looking at, $200,000 here and there. So we'll hear more of that, I think, and a bunch of stuff coming forward. Nonetheless, a lot of professional development takes place.
They also collaborate as coaches with Stephanie. They meet monthly to collaborate. I'm thinking maybe they meet just before the admin or maybe right after, to talk about what we need or what the buildings need. But they're always, even though things might look a little bit different in our different buildings, they're making sure that as a district at the elementary, that we're moving forward with some of our goals and supporting each other and planning out that district-level professional development.
Kind of a side responsibility, the literacy coach, they picked up, you know, a big part of literacy, obviously, is reading books. And in our two schools, we have leveled reading books, you know, depending on where our readers at, to meet them with their needs. So we've got these big bookrooms that need to have inventory taken, things need to be organized, we have to, you know, know what's going on, we have to order new books every year. So that's a side responsibility that goes along with the literacy coach, and they work pretty hard at it because it's a big part of what they do to build, provide those resources for the classrooms and to help in that respect, so...
And they have to know what's in there too.
And keep them organized, right? Because in the LMC, there's an aide in each one of them that helped to resell the books, so the teachers, "I'm going to hurry, I'm just going to sit down on the shelf and I'll come back." Yeah.
Just some of the extra things going on. As we said, they just jump in wherever help is needed. So these are some of their extra little things. Tomorrow, we're doing our continuous improvement plan, so Vicky will be part of our team to help us along the way. They've been a huge part of the new scheduling conversations and also jump in with our solutions team to talk about those kids that just something's not quite right. And so she's always there to lend the literacy angle for our kids, so...
So our literacy coaches, any questions?
Please be cracking up a little bit.
I get to stay up here.
Thank you. You get to stay for the first part. I wanted to talk about two different things. And the first having to be, having our child development screening, which we just completed the first part of March. And after that, we got together, Chad and I, along with our early childhood teachers, and decided to talk about how could we change the process, improve the process, and what, how could we look at it differently? This past year, we screened 49 students, and we think that we could be pulling in more students. We really think that there's some students that we're missing out in the community, and so we wanted to look at, how could we do something even more, even different? So one of the things we want to do next year is, first of all, instead of doing it in March, we want to do it in February, because we think we could get more accurate numbers sooner, especially when it has number, the budget, and looking at numbers and teaching and staffing and things. So we'd like to do it in February. The other thing we'd like to do is house it in the gym. We'd like to do it in one day, on a Thursday, and we'd like to house it in the gym. And I'll let you talk about why.
Well, space is a big issue, obviously. We've been currently using a classroom downstairs, either in early childhood, or one of the 4K classrooms. We've been doing it like on a Thursday night into Friday morning, you know, some hours for Thursday night and some hours for Friday morning, and it gets real congested in those areas. And so there's a lot going on, everybody, the professionals that we have in the building, you know, we've got everybody from our speech and language, our occupational therapists, Tammy's there, we've got special 4K teachers there. We've got a lot of adults there trying to assess some kids and see how they're doing. Well, to branch that out and hopefully to make a bigger deal out of this scenario, we'd like to use our gymnasium for a day and have a lot of room in there, invite a lot of community organizations, maybe the ones that we haven't thought about. So we're trying to think outside the box and try to get all this information that we can from like all the daycare facilities and...
The library, the hospital, different organizations, birth to three, and make it more like a community fair and really engage our community in on the process. And we would do it more on a, like a Thursday from 12 until 6. We would do the screenings that day, the next day, we would debrief as a staff and look at what students had, what needs, and really sit down together and start to look at class lists and formulate what the needs are. So we're looking at making this bigger and better and really looking at how to meet the needs of this community and pulling the community in to be part of this.
We're really hoping that it'll help our planning in the respect that people don't wait till the last second to say, "Hey, my kid needs to come to school, and could you please take a look at him and evaluate him?" Unfortunately, as much as we do do now, we still have a lot of that happen. So we're going to try to be even more proactive and find out how many kids are out there with significant needs and need help. So we'll try different stuff, I guess, to see what happens.
Yep, after, this year, we had 49 students that went through, five led to referrals and are going through the referral process right now. And this past year, I would tell you right now, our two psychologists right now in the district between initial evaluations and reevaluations, last year, they did a total of 146 initial and reevals throughout the entire year. As of a week ago, we're over, we're over 160 already for this year. We still have what I would call the busiest quarter of the year left to go. So this is the time of year when schools specifically are looking at those interventions, those tier-one, tier-two, tier-three interventions, and what's worked and what hasn't, and so we're really starting to look at what's that next step for students. So right now, we're really looking at all of our student needs right now, so...
Well, I'm going to age myself a little bit. I mean, I was a part of the original Child Development Days creation back 35 years ago, but it used to be in the gym with all of the people around and truly a community event. And I think one of, and I've stopped in at the Child Development Days this year and previous years too, and I absolutely agree with you, it needs to be the big thing again. But one thing that I think you do really, really well at in Jackson County does a good job is to involve birth to three, because if we can get those kids coming in and being screened, birth to three, we're going to, they're going to be that much farther ahead. And I think we have a good partnership with that, and I think you're right on the right track, and I think that will be very successful to revive that into the big community event.
We're excited. The committee's not once already, and we need again this Thursday, so we've already got the ball rolling and are starting to plan next year's already. So we have the date set for February 7th for next year already. But I also wanted to talk about my next of students a little bit and tell you where they're at. Throughout the year, one of the things we talk a lot about is what they want to do when they get out of school, you know, whether it's going on to school or what kind of jobs they're looking at. Because some of these kids think there's nothing out there for them. They think that there are no jobs out there, and we continue to talk to them about what are those possibilities. And so this past week, last week, we went on two business tours. We went to Matthews and Sparta, which was absolutely amazing. The kids were wowed by that place, and they put on a fabulous tour. And then we went to Nick's Welding, and he too did a great job. It was wonderful for some of the students to see, and, you know, each business reaches a different student, and it might reach just one, but it reaches a different student. This week, we have DNS coming in on Wednesday to do a classroom presentation at the school, and then they go there next Monday. So we continue to explore different job possibilities for students. It's pretty exciting. Small things excite me. So two of our kids got jobs. One was at Lockdon Silver in Toma, because he lives halfway between here and that way. And then another student got a job at Subway, and he was really struggling with getting the menu down. This sounds like a really stupid story, but he was really struggling with getting the menu. He came in one day and he said, "Mrs. Cabas, I mucked up eight sandwiches last night, I gave the wrong change, I lost $20," and he was going on, and he said, "I'm going to get fired today. I know I'm going to get fired." He said, "I go to work at 1:00, can you take me today? I just, I need you to calm me down as we're going." Well, he comes back about maybe an hour later and says, "I made a cheat sheet last night. Can you go with me? Let's go get the cheat sheet and you can quiz me over the lunch hour on how to make sandwiches." I'm thinking, "Okay." So we run to Subway and over the lunch hour, we're quizzing him on how to make sandwiches. I probably know as much as he does about how to make Subway sandwiches at this point, but he still has the job. So I'm like, "Woo-hoo, he still has the job." And it's like, we're four weeks into it, so you know, I, you know, those are the small successes that I think are huge.
And he was problem-solving for his own success.
Well, I was so proud of him because it was like, hey, he wanted that job bad enough that he's coming up and asking me to go get his cheat sheet for him, and then he wanted me to drive him on the way to, again, rehearse how to make a sandwich. So those are just, those are some of the small successes, but they're huge for us, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that, that is it? Okay, okay, thank you. We'll move on to WASB and other trainings. We have an election going on for school board this year, as always, and Black River Falls will be hosting the new board member gathering this year. CISA before wasn't able to do that, and so Shelley was asked...
Offered the high school acquaintance area.
Yeah, yeah. And so we'll be hosting that for our 26 districts in the region.
Those 26.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. And so that would be something, if, we always really like to have seasoned board members attend that to just kind of enrich the conversation, but we'll have board members coming from all those districts as well as district administrators, so certainly consider that April 19th, and that starts at 7:00.
And I am actually at the WASTA Spring Convention that night, so I will not be here, but I've asked Marty to make sure she's available to make sure...
So we'll have other district administrators that will be gone too.
Probably.
Okay, okay, okay. I'll prepare for that then. Okay, thank you. Anything else that anyone would like to report on?
Well, Patty and I attended the forum.
We did.
Well, I attended from above on the walking track and doing our goal, and that was very interesting activity. I thought it was well-run and...
It was. It was very...
Mr. and Mrs. did a great job. I thought, of the discussion.
Yeah, I've heard such good things about that.
I didn't know how it was going to be.
Okay. Great. Okay, any future agenda items?
Mia Holman had emailed wanting to talk about an update on elementary schedule changes, and so I will work with the elementary principals on that. And there was one other item in the email. Marty, do you by any chance remember it?
I won't.
Okay, but I will look back on her email and add that other item. Any from the room here, other than I have policy 871, concerns about curriculum?
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn to closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, per N1, per NC, for the purpose of discussing the evaluation of the superintendent and other contracts. We need a roll call vote. Marty, will you do that for us, please?
Sure. Mary Jo Rosmanowsky?
Yes.
Mary Jo Radka?
Yes.
Scott Burton?
Yes.
Laura Ome?
Yes.
Amy Huffman?
Yes.
Mia Holman Thunderco?
Patty Jacobson?
Okay. We will take about a 10-minute break and then resume to closed session.